Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. It's 2:00. I want to go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting to order. It's Thursday, April 24, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. So go ahead and start with the flag salute. We'll have Commissioner Gray lead us in the flag salute. That's his penalty, Maury.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll open it, turn it over for a roll call.
Commissioner Bryant?
Present.
Commissioner Curran?
Present.
Commissioner Gray?
Present.
Vice Chair Chantel?
Present.
And Chair Agostini?
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. So next up is Commissioner Comments. I'll go from my left all the way to the right. Start with Commissioner Gray.
Always love to go first. Welcome, everybody. We have a relatively small group today. We have a couple of our noted council members here, but I received notice from our Clerk Christie that I was reappointed effective January 1 to this Planning Commission. I'd like to thank the council for that honor and privilege and glad to remain of service. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chantel?
And as with Commissioner Gray, thank you very much for reappointment. I appreciate it and I'm very honored to be part of this organization. I'd just like to comment and recognize Commissioner Bryant for receiving the Senior Inspiration 2025 Award. He's been an inspiration to me personally. I've learned a lot just listening to him at our meetings and thank you for all the service and all the years that you've participated and given back to the community.
I have one problem with it, though. I wish they would drop the senior. I've been lying about my age for so many years. Now I can't do it anymore.
Well, congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner. You guys and I echo those same comments. I appreciate the privilege to be a member and serving on the Planning Commission and be a part of Rancho Mirage. It's a great city, a great community. So I'll turn it next to Commissioner Curran. Curran?
Anyway, well, I just want to thank the staff because they met with me once again and supported me so much through this last year. And I just want to thank them. They're amazing here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bryant?
So I too am privileged and honored to serve another year on the Planning Commission. This is my seventh year, I guess. I started in 2018 and I've definitely learned a lot and there's much more to learn. It's a continuing process. You never know at all. It's so complex. And again, it goes to how important it is that we have the Planning Department because without them, we would look pretty foolish up here, actually. I also, I want to thank Ben and Joy who spent a lot of time with me in preparing for this. While there's not many people here, there are a lot of complex issues. And they spent, we spent a lot of time. I'm only probably going to highlight about 10% of what we talked about, but there were many more things that we delved into to help me understand more in depth about even other issues that come before the city. Also want to thank Commissioner Gray, who gave me some inside information that Ms. Dukic, the Director, ran to her window and was screaming, "I can't take it anymore." Commissioner Bryant constantly pounding me to get rid of those ugly, big jagged rocks that are heat sink and ruin plants in landscaping. So, and I know you can't divulge your sources where you said that. And instead of pounding, I would have preferred the word advocating. But be that as it may, I think I'm making progress. And Mayor Wile, you know me long enough that I'm an optimist being in the promotion, marketing and sales arenas for 50 years. You learn to take a lot of no's before you take a yes. And I want to assure you, undaunted, I am going to continue my quest. Okay. As I often do, I ride around the city. I look, looking at projects that are underway and I like to see the progress, what's going on. Of course, at Disney Cotina, about a month ago, I went out. My sister was in town from South Carolina and then a friend of mine was here who actually markets high-end branded residences, you know, the $5 to $20 million stuff. And we went out there, I think, right there when they opened on it at 10:00 and went in. And we spent time in their sales gallery, which is very impressive. And then my sister and friend, they went out and toured the homes. I stayed in there and listened to the presentations. They're, all the people come in. They have incredible touchscreen interactive map. And I was able to talk to the sales agents, get a good idea for what's selling, what's going on. The lake is almost filled. Construction's booming. And what we hope is they will also get a boutique hotel and condo hotel units which drive TOT to the city. And one of the things that's going to be a boon to them is across the street is the Shadow Ridge timeshare. There are thousands of people there every day. Probably have, I think, probably have 800 or 900 keys now. And they can literally walk right across the street because the entrance is going to line up to their entrance. And those people can walk and bicycle over there. So the commercial center is going to be a happening place. And yesterday, while I was at a doctor's appointment, I went over on the Eisenhower campus for a stop by the Country Club Development. We know there's three facilities, the memory care, childcare administration building. They're going lickety-split over there with the groundwork coming along very quickly. I rode through the Betty Ford Center and I forget, a couple of years ago, when they came before, all the changes they were making, buildings to new buildings. One of the, when it came before us, the neighbors on the south, they were concerned about the visual aspect and so on. So they put in, they have very high Ficus hedges all along on the south side. You can't even see the houses over there. They've done a great job of that. And at their entrance on Visadell Soul, they put in a very nice wall and landscaping to cover, because there's still vacant land between there and the, kind of the main part of it. So they put in a great wall and landscaping. The street coming in is curvilinear. And while at that, at the Planning Commission, I was not in favor of an entrance over there because I didn't, I felt that it might interfere with the residential area. I think they've done a good job of making that not so. Anyway, they've done the best they can if you're going to have an entrance over there, but it looks really good. And then the other, if anybody has been out there recently, the cardiology, the new Cardiology Center. It's mind-boggling how fast they've grown up. I talked to the head valet and he had on his calendar, they brought their first beam on March 15. And literally, I think it's about topped out now, the iron superstructure. I've never seen anything go up so fast. And both that, that center is desperately needed for the valley. Their, the existing center is overloaded and both for the current population of patients and then the future. So it's going to be a great facility, magnificent building and so on. So both of those saying, they're not only a huge benefit to the city of Rancho Mirage, but they benefit the entire valley also. So again, as I've always said, that's a shining star in our Rancho Mirage galaxy is the Eisenhower Campus. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So next on our agenda is our non-agenda public comments.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards for non-agenda?
Good afternoon. Brad Anderson, I currently live in the city. I thought I missed it. Sorry. I would have thrown out the slip. While I'm here, I just wanted, I didn't think I'd make today's meeting. So sorry. I wanted to bring up a few items. I guess the main one is the recording of the minutes. Not that you have anything to do with that, but I would definitely strongly advocate for you to advocate against the current policy just because it is a sense of censorship against individual speakers like myself when the recording minutes are recorded. I mean, that's a bad way of saying it, but. And I know at prior council meetings or prior planning, Planning Commission meetings, there was talk about, one of the commissioners spoke about people not complaining, so everything should be okay, meaning like the porcupine and In-N-Out and those type of developments. It all took place in a number of years during the COVID crisis. And I just want to just emphasize that just because people don't continue to complain doesn't mean that people are concerned about the matters and how it impacts their lives. Like me, I don't complain about a lot of stuff. Hint, hint, wink, wink. Mainly on a few topics just because it doesn't get me anywhere at this podium. I will definitely advocate later for other items or other positions or other, I guess, platforms to make my points viewed, my points and views as widely, you know, available as possible. And why I'm, I'm not going to waste all your time. I just think, you know, stuff off the top of my head concerning the volunteer and the investigations to people that volunteer. I know a lot of people are okay with that. I am to a certain aspect. But I think it's just an overreach of the city because I don't think there's any clear set policy. The city manager has complete control of that information. And I'm just, I'm against that mainly because of that. There's really no transparency. I'm going to use that word a lot. And I noticed at the library, there's going to be a volunteer-type avenue for kids to serve there. Are they going to go through this process of background checks through the Department of Defense, not Department of Defense, Department of Justice? I doubt it. I hope not. But if they, that should be, if that's what the city wants to do. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something not on today's agenda? That was the only speaker.
All righty. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and close the public comments. Next up is approval of the minutes from the March 13, 2025 regular meeting. I need a motion to approve or discussion.
I'll move to approve the minutes on the March 13, 2025 Commission meeting.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Vice Chair Chantel, can you try yours? Thank you. Motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Gray abstained.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our action item 5A, General Plan Annual Progress Report for 2024. I'll turn it over to staff for our report. A please.
Thank you. Good afternoon and thank you, Chair Agostini, and good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. For your review today is the General Plan Annual Progress Report for the 2024 calendar year. This report is a routine report required by the state that summarizes the status of the general plan implementation and highlights planning activities for the 2024 calendar year. Staff has not received any outside correspondence or comments regarding this request and staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report and forward it to the City Council to receive and file. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. So I'll go ahead and open it up to public comments.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? No speakers.
Thank you. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Comments. Going left to right, Commissioner Gray.
I have no comments on this item.
Commissioner Chantel?
It was great reading and a reminder of all the work that the city does and the City Council. And it was impressive.
Thank you. I have no comments myself. I'll turn it to Commissioner Curran.
No comments, no questions.
Commissioner Bryant?
All right. Thank you, Jason. Joy, could you bring up the second page of this? Right here, please. It's the overview page?
Yes.
Okay. Could you bring that up on the screen, please?
Yes, give us one moment.
Is it page number 10, Commissioner Bryant?
Pardon me? The what?
Is that page number 10 on the?
Yeah, that's page number 10 on the packet. Yep.
So we can pull that up for you.
There we go. Okay. Just wanted to point out that there are a lot of moving parts and pieces of the general plan. There happens to be 11 here. I'm going to just highlight a few of them. And again, thank you again, Ben and Joy, for all the time you spent with me Tuesday going through each of these in detail. So the first one, in the land use, there again, they're talking about the cell phone study, the wireless existing in planned infrastructure and so on. And I know we have an item on that later on. So I'm not going to go into it. One nifty thing in there is the, you can go to the website, the city website now, and you can put your home address in there and it will tell you what carriers service your area and the quality or the amount that you get in each area. So that's pretty cool. I don't know if that's actually, is that up in place and in working now?
That's available on our city website for every resident to access.
Okay. All right. So that's very cool. The second one, it was the policy 4.2. It was Highway 111 specific plans merging the, there's an east plan, a west plan, and actually there are gaps along there that are not covered by each. And so the goal is to merge those into one plan for the entire Highway 111. And it's critical for the long term that we develop businesses that generate recurring revenues to the city, like the Jessup Auto Plaza. So we're waiting with bated breath for that one to come on. But most of our commercial land left in the city is along Highway 111. Obviously, there's stuff off Bob Hope out there. There are all the medical facilities. And so later on, the economic development study, I'm going to get into, because we don't have, we don't have lots of land to develop yet. And so we got to be careful what we do and be sure that those businesses not only are serving the residents and the businesses, but that it generates revenue to the city. Then moving into, there's a section called Public Services and Facilities. A couple of them were 4.1, 4.1A. It was going to study the feasibility of acquiring and operating an electrical timeshare infrastructure. And I know it said in there there were going to be feasibility studies. I assume that's operational and financial. And I know the city is well capable of doing that. But what was not in there that popped up in my mind was the risk and liability assessment. And as a resident, obviously, and a planning commissioner, it threw up huge red flags for me. We just got to look at the Southern California fires, the Paradise Fire and 18 Tubbs Fire, I think, in 17. And the public utilities, Southern California Edison, PG&E. And I believe the Paradise Fire damages were $15 to $30 billion and PG&E filed bankruptcy. And so, you know, without far more information, I would be against the city acquiring ownership of the electrical transmission things. Obviously, we don't have forests where we could have forest fires. But about 20 years ago, there was a S. Southern Cal, an Edison station or something along the street just near me and it blew up in the middle of the night. It was like a bomb went off. And so while it didn't start a fire, if people were near there, there's just so much potential liability. And so that was something that threw up a red flag for me. The next one in here was the economic and fiscal. And one of the goal, first goal was, it says to balance the, have a balanced economic base that serves the residences, businesses and our visitors. And I think the next step in that is the city to do an economic development study. I assume that's moving ahead, but it's going to build on the valley-wide studies that were done by, I think, Sebag and some other things and to build on that. So my comment on economic development studies, and I'm sure you've all seen many of them, but oftentimes, the first 50 pages is fluff about the economics, the population and all that sort of thing. We all know all that. And so these studies are very expensive and what we want to see is coming out with specific recommendations that can be implemented. They're actionable and that will help draw businesses here. And those businesses, again, that generate recurring revenues to the city. And then a little further down, it goes in again to the specific plan, Highway 111, which I previously mentioned. And then the last one, the policy 2.7, still in the economic fiscal, was that the city maintain prudent reserves to cover at least one year of operating expenses. And the, I believe, the 24, 25 fiscal budget is about $35 million. And as of the 6/30/24 end of the year, the financial statements show that we have in there, it says 61.7. I assume that's not $61.7. That's $61.7 million.
It's a million and we've corrected that typo there.
All right. Well, just in case somebody reads it, literally. And so that's about 22 months of coverage. And I doubt there's more than a handful of cities in the entire state of California that have reserves at all, maybe, or certainly not coverage like that. And that's important as things change. And our costs are constantly going up. One of the big ones are our law enforcement and our fire. And that's a, always a priority for our residents and the costs go up. So again, going back to a balanced economic base and our future development, we got to make sure it's generating enough growing revenues that cover our growing expenses of the city. But again, kudos to the city. Very few cities have that type of coverage and reserves and that, or that fiscally sound. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So now I need a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report and forward it to the City Council to receive and file.
Second.
All righty. Next on the public hearing is extension of time case number ET 25-0001 for a one-year time extension for a tentative tract map, case number TTM 22-0003. Applicant Philip Formotor of Formotor Engineering.
Good afternoon again, Planning Commissioners. For your consideration today is an extension time case number ET 25-0001 for tentative tract map number 38224. This is the first extension of time request for this map. The applicant's team has been working on their final map summaries and this time extension will allow the project team additional time to coordinate with Imperial Irrigation District to work on solutions regarding the electrical capacity issues in the district's service territory and to work on fulfilling the remaining final map requirements through the City Engineering Division. This project site is located in Section 30 at the northeast corner of Via Hosfina and Ginger Rogers Road. The tentative map proposes to subdivide 4.77 acres into nine single-family residential lots and common lots for the private street and landscape retention basins. The City Council approved this tentative map in February of 2023. The landscape plan features desert-appropriate landscaping and will remain the same as originally approved. The only minor change to this landscape plan since its original approval is the addition of eight 14-foot bare trunk height date palm trees located between the Palo Verde and Moga Trees along the Via Hosfina frontage. These tree, these palm trees were incorporated into the landscape plan to better match the landscape parkways along the newer subdivisions in proximity to the project site. Aside from these minor landscape changes, the applicant is not proposing any changes to the project and simply wishes extended entitlement as it was approved. As part of this extension request, staff is recommending changes to the condition of approval. First is the revision of condition of approval number three to reflect the new approval expiration date. The second one is an addition of condition approval number seven, number 11, stating that the grading permits shall not be issued prior to vertical development entitlements unless approved by the Public Works or Development Services directors. Staff has not received any outside correspondence or comments regarding this request. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommends to the City Council, one, approval of a filing of a notice of exemption pursuant to Secret Guidelines Section 15162 for subsequent EIRs and negative declarations. And two, approval of a one-year extension time for tentative tract map case number TTM 22-0003, subject to the condition of approval and based on the content findings in the staff report. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to address any questions Commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. So I'll open it up to, turn it over to, for public comment.
Thank you. So I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony on public hearing item number 6A? No speakers.
Thank you. Next is Commissioner Comments. Going left to right, Commissioner Gray. Big on you today.
All righty. On its face, this seems to be somewhat of a no-brainer. It's, the applicant is simply asking for another one-year extension. I'm in favor of that. I did want to note and make a request to both staff and to the City Council that the reason for the, for this, the reason mandating this extension appears to be a difficulty in getting sufficient electric service to this property because of IID. I know we've had some discussion in the past about participating in some way to, in the construction or encouraging the construction of an additional substation. I think that's really of vital importance to the city, not just for this particular project, but also for some of the affordable housing that's being constructed. I believe it's also impacted by the need for power provided by IID and may not be available at this time. So I'd like to see that we're doing everything possible in order to enable the development of Section 30 in particular and any other affected property where there's not sufficient service from I, from, available from IID.
Thank you. Commissioner Chantel?
This seems like an appropriate request, but I do understand that the substation delay is a problem and would be a problem for other developments. And it makes sense because I understand also that these substations can cost between $20 to $30 million apiece. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but it's a situation. And I would agree. I think this is appropriate.
And I as well. It seems reasonable as a request and certainly the challenges in developing and the risks people take in developing property. But one of, one of the major risks throughout the valley, especially with IID, is But one of, one of the major risks throughout the valley, especially with IID, is, is power. So, but allowing or extending a one-year extension seems to be reasonable. So I'll go to my right. Commissioner Curran.
I agree. It is certainly reasonable, and I know all the other issues, but I have no more comments to add to what's already been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryant.
Yeah, a question for the applicant. Has IID given you a start and finish date for that subdivision, when that's going to
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Philip Formotor of Formotor Engineering. So we, we don't, we don't have a timeline with IID, but we do understand that it'll be more than a year. And I guess one of the questions we were gonna bring up was requests that you consider a three-year extension rather than the one-year extension was it's not likely that this would be resolved within a year. So that's a request to you. And then also, on the, on the, on the grading requirement, that your grading permits can't be issued prior to vertical development entitlements, kind of seems like a catch-22 that, you know, we, to fulfill the conditions of the tract map, we'd need to grade, do rough grading to put in streets and sewer and water, and it would conflict with, you know, we wouldn't have a vertical development plan in place at that time. So we kind of asked for a modification of that requirement. Did I answer your question? I kind of added to your question. Sorry.
Ben, can you address that as far as, you know, the catch-22, if they need to do other development there? Can you address that part?
So the condition that he's referencing is condition number 11, which we've applied to other projects as well in the past, which states that grading permits shall not be issued prior to vertical development entitlements unless approved by the Public Works or Development Services Director. So are there, there are provisions in there for potential modifications if approved by the Public Works or Development Services Director. But kind of the purpose of this condition is to see progress with projects here. That's why we kind of have that vertical developments, entitlements section here.
So are you saying that they can get, they can get approval to do groundwork and streets and things like that before vertical?
So I can let Brian kind of further clarify here.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Ryan Stendell, Public Works Director, Assistant City Manager, staff member. The answer is could. The reason why it's being applied in this specific circumstance is we have a known deficiency with the utility. The fear on our side and why we have applied the condition as it's written is because we don't want to let grading occur until we have some sense that the project is ready to move forward. IID considers entitlement the time when they are able to provide power in our conversations with them. So from our perspective, why would we let equipment hit the ground and disturb the soil unless we have utility there, houses designed and approved and ready to roll? We have a significant amount of calls coming in on a daily basis on dust mitigation, so we just don't want to be put in a position where we put the city in the position to be getting calls on a project that stalled out, sitting there, has been graded, has no power, has no homes, and we're stuck getting the phone calls because it happens, it happens daily. So we're just trying to hedge against what we think might happen in an area that we know is underserved and leaving the caveat in there of either mine or mine's approval, if we've got all of our ducks in a row, provides us the off-ramp if we need it. So that was the intent, was just, we know we have an issue up in Section 30. It's not smart to issue grading plans without everything ready to roll, so we applied a condition we've used in the past, and we think it works in this circumstance.
And once IID gives a definite start date, would that give the city comfort?
Yeah.
That you could go ahead and issue so they could get a head start?
100%.
You know, time is money to them.
100%.
Okay. And, and then if IID gives you a commitment, are they bound to do it?
It depends on what their letter says. Sometimes they have a condition that's like, we might be able to provide you power, but if they are certain, they're at a certain stage, they've got their, you know, ducks alive, yes, 100%, they are out the door, they are moving. We're not saying that they can't pull a grading, the, the trigger of entitlements is important that, we wouldn't stop you from, I'm sorry, I want to make sure, we want to make sure that the homes are designed, the tract is there, the power is there before we start issuing grading permits currently with the deficiency in power. That's the way we think it's appropriate for right now.
Okay. So if IID says, we're going to start on this date, then assuming all the other things were there, the city could issue them a permit to start doing the grading?
Yep.
So you know that by the time the IID says we'll hit this date, they can be doing their work?
Yes.
So they don't have to wait until IID is actually there?
Correct.
And then start.
Correct. And we're shoulder-to-shoulder with IID on this issue. Our city manager has taken this completely shoulder to load on the Ranch Mirage's front of, what's the cost, where's it going to go, how are we going to pay for it? There has been an agreement already approved by the City Council to fund in seven figures plus, so the commitment is there on the city, we're just, we're in line. Every city from Indio West is dealing with this with IID territory. We're working on it as quickly as we can.
Are all the other utilities out there, is the, other than the power, is the water out there, water and sewer?
Yeah.
Okay. So water and sewer is there?
Yeah.
That's not a hold, so it's the power is the holdup?
Yeah, that's the big holdup.
Okay.
The long lead item, yes.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're absolutely correct. This isn't going to be solved in 12 months. This is going to take a while.
And again, your, your point, yes, I know the city has done incredible, and Isaiah, I think he's been more the, trying to corral everybody. I believe the city has agreed to put in like $5 million, 19% of the total of 25 or whatever it is, and they've already made a deposit of 1.23 million or something like that?
There's some, yes.
Yeah. And a lot of that is, it's the, the city doing not only other development, but we have stalled affordable housing out there, and the city has done everything, bent over backwards to enable affordable housing, and we've already approved some things via Vail and some of those other things out there, and we want to see that affordable housing get built, and it's stalled because of IID also.
Yep.
All right. Okay. All right. Well, that sheds a lot of light on it. Thank you. Okay. Thanks so much.
Is that, is that all your comments, Commissioner?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yes. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Chair Agassini, I have a couple of more questions that came up, if that's allowable.
Sure.
My first question, I didn't, the one thing I didn't hear an answer to was the applicant's request that the extension be longer than one year, given the likelihood that it's going to take two or three or more years for this to get completed. Is there a response from staff as to why restrict this to one year and make the applicant come back so almost guaranteed?
So staff's recommending a one-year time extension, which is typical of our other time extensions, just so that we can reevaluate the situation in one year. And just for clarification purposes, the purpose of the time extension is for the map and for the map to be finalized. And to finalize the map, they can finalize it even with a pending IID situation.
Although the economics of finaling it are quite different if there's power or if there isn't power, right?
That, that may be true, but staff's recommendation is a one year so that we can reevaluate the situation kind of within this area and throughout the city.
And then my second question, maybe this is for planning, excuse me, or for Public Works. Is there any possibility or thought of bringing power to these areas from, from SCE rather than IID? I'm sure that's very, very territorial, but I was curious whether there's an answer other than waiting for IID to move forward.
I believe you're an attorney. I'll ask you what you think. No, yeah, you're right. It's, it's almost, the only agencies that I might think would be worse are school districts, but yeah, it's, it's a territorial, they have, I don't even know what the term might be, Colin, but yeah, there's, I've never seen an instance where they would play ball together to exchange territories willingly. So I, I just don't think it's possible.
Maybe the tribe wants to build a power plant.
Yeah. Yeah, but stay tuned because there's a lot of discussion about IID and their long-term ability to deliver power. So there's a bigger, broader discussion that's happening here. This is just one tiny issue, so.
Thank you very much. My only comment for the fellow commissioners is I would suggest an amendment if we're going to make this motion, that we make this a two-year period rather than one year, given all that we've heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? All right. So I'll open it up to a motion in a second, and if you want to add your amendment.
I'll, I'll make the motion and put it in that language. So I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approving of the filing of a notice of exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA Guidelines Section 15162, paren subject, subsequent EIRs and negative declarations, close paren, and approval of a two-year extension of time, ET 25-0001 for the tentative tract map case number TTM 22-003, paren TTM 38224, close paren, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the attached staff report except for the two-year period.
Colin, or may I ask a question? Colin, are we able to do that? Is that a legal motion that we can do and then vote on?
Yes. The Minnesota Code does allow an extension of up to three years, I believe, so the, the recommendation for a two-year extension would be within your authority.
All right. I will second the motion.
Thank you. We'll open up the vote. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our next agenda item, environmental, environmental case number EA24-0011 and general plan text amendment case number GPTA24-0001, Assembly Bill 2140, Safety Element Update, applicant, City of Ranch Mirage, location, Citywide. I'll turn it over to Joy.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners again. For your consideration today, the city initiated general plan text amendment to amend the city's safety element by incorporating the adopted local hazard mitigation plan update by reference in accordance with Assembly Bill 2140. So AB 2140 is an optional state incentive to help cities and counties become more resilient to natural hazards. Compliance with AB 2140 would make the city eligible for additional recovery or part or all of its local share costs on eligible public assistance funding provided by the state through the California Disaster Assistance Act in event of a disaster. So this steps, this slide shows steps for AB 2140 compliance that we have to complete before the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services can deem the city in compliance. The city has completed the first two steps last year, the 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which has been approved by FEMA and adopted by the City Council in September. Today's request is step number three, which is to amend the safety element of the general plan by incorporating the adopted Local Hazard Mitigation Plan by reference and adding a link to the plan on the city's website. This slide here shows page nine of the safety element. The proposed text amendment is in yellow highlight, and the excerpt is also included in the staff report. Staff has not received any outside correspondence or comments regarding this request. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number Next in Order, recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution Number Next in Order for the following. A, find that the adoption of the updated safety element is not subject to CEQA, present to CEQA Guidelines Section 15061B3, general rule, common sense exemption. And B, to approve the general plan text amendment case number GPTA24-0001, incorporating by reference the 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan into the safety element in the city's general plan in accordance with AB 2140. This concludes my presentation, and staff's available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony on public hearing item number 6B? No speakers.
Thank you. So that closes public comment. Moving to Commissioner Comments, going left to right. Commissioner Gray.
I don't have any comments. This seems very thorough and appropriate under the circumstance, and I will close my comments other than to the extent that Murray spurs my brain into action once again with his comments or questions.
Yes. Commissioner Chantel.
That's great. I'd just like to say, I think any, any awareness and impact regarding safety is important, given the frequency of earthquakes, for example, that has happened here in Southern California. So important to focus on that. Thank you.
And I, obviously, we've experienced recent natural disasters, whether in our, in our local city or other cities, in parts of the country throughout. So the importance of having the ability to get funding is important because sometimes these natural hazard disasters are catastrophic. So maintaining something along these lines is important for, for the community, for, for their support in getting, in getting life put back together. So certainly very valuable. I would just also, a couple of things that we deal with here locally, certainly earthquakes. Most importantly, it seems like air quality and, and the wind, just continuing to watch and monitor the air quality in the desert, which it seems to have deteriorated, deteriorated over, over the last few, few years since the recent tropical storm. So other, those are my comments. I'll turn it to Commissioner Curran.
No, I don't have any additional comments.
And Mr. Bryant.
Ryan, would you mind coming up again? I have a question for you for Public Works regarding this area.
Yes, Commissioner.
In the rains we've had last year and so on, where we closed Frank Sinatra and Country Club, I think I read someplace, it costs us 300,000, I don't remember the number, I'm probably off, but each one, what were those costs to make the repairs and maintenance for those things, ballpark?
In total, Ramona and Bob Hope was the worst, but all three, I want to say, was just shy of a million dollars. The Ramona and Bob Hope had some significant storm drain impacts that we had to go underground for. The other two, Country Club Frank Sinatra, and, Country Club and Frank Sinatra Low Water Crossings were very small potatoes, probably 100,000 between the two, to replace some asphalt cleanup and get back open.
So in this motion, these changes are coming for, does that qualify us, these new changes? Did we get any FEMA or whatever state money to?
We do. We do, and I think what Joy and Brian are proposing with the changes to the LHMP is it just makes our ability to work with FEMA stronger. If you notice that the, it was an Assembly Bill or a Senate Bill, I can't recall, was from 2006. This has been around for some time, so just getting these tidied up helps us check boxes when we're going through these application processes, which can be agonizing for staff. And I doubt he's listening, but Jeff Benson in our office spends innumerable hours working on FEMA reimbursement documents. We submitted on the 2019 Valentine Day flood, which we just got reimbursement from in the last year, just to tell you how long it takes to get. So we won't see any finality on the tropical storm for probably a couple of years. But the applications are in, the routine meetings are happening, the cogs are turning.
And so the Frank Sinatra and, and Country Club, is it foreseeable that we may get some reimbursements for those couple hundred thousand dollars?
100%. Yes.
And then for a long, long time, there was a consideration to put a bridge across Frank Sinatra. Frank Sinatra, and that number cost ballooned up to 20 million dollars?
57.
57 million?
Without any contingencies.
Okay. Well, you always come in on budgets, you don't have to worry about contingency, right? So I, I'm not sure when it was shelved or canned or whatever, but that was the right decision. So, you know, you have a 50 million dollar project, and let's say every two years you got to spend $400,000. What's 5% of 50 million dollars?
Yeah.
That we could invest in interest and get the money?
Yeah.
So that was the right decision. And I've never thought a bridge across Frank Sinatra or Bob Hope made any sense at all. Every three years, I'd rather drive around when they close it off, no big deal, and spend a few hundred thousand dollars a year versus investing 50 million dollars at, if anybody's got a calculator, what's 5% of 50 million? Two and a half million?
A lot.
So, you know, economically, it's way better to not build a bridge, even if we don't get the reimbursement funds. So, okay, great. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's it. So I need a, open it up for a motion in a second.
I'd like to make the motion that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2025 PC Next in Order, recommending that the city council take the following action: Adopt Resolution Number 2025 Next in Order for the following actions: A, find that the adoption of the updated general plan safety element is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061b3, general rule, common sense exemption; and B, approve general plan text amendment case number GPTA 24 dash 0001, incorporating by reference the 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan into the safety element in the city's general plan in accordance with Assembly Bill 2140.
I'm a second.
I'll second that.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. So moving on to item 6C, zoning text amendment case number ZTA 25 dash 0001, applicant, City of Ranch Mirage. Consideration of an ordinance amending Section 17.20.040, Development Design Considerations of Chapter 17.2, General Property and Use Standards, repealing and replacing Chapter 17.32 Wireless Communication Facilities, amending Section 17.34 dash, or point 010, introduction of Chapter 17.34, introduction of Division 4, Permits and Review, and amending Section 17.48.045, Minor Conditional Use Permits of Chapter 17.48, Conditional Use Permits of Title 17, Zoning of the Ranch Mirage Municipal Code, Location, Citywide.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. The primary purpose of this ordinance is to introduce certain amendments to Title 17, Zoning of the Ranch Mirage Municipal Code, as further detailed in the staff report. As part of regular municipal code maintenance, updates to chapters and sections are occasionally required to update standards and ensure that the municipal code complies with new regulations. On March 6, 2025, the city council received and filed the Wireless Master Plan, which contains key data and recommendations on how to improve cellular coverage within the city. The city council directed staff to initiate the necessary municipal code amendments to streamline the permitting process and to reduce barriers to entitlement for wireless communication facilities. The proposed revisions to Chapter 17.32 of the municipal code achieve these objectives. Other amendments are proposed for Section 17.20.040, Development slash Design Considerations, which clarifies that conduit and pipes shall not be located along the building exterior. Section 17.34.010, Introduction, modifies a footnote regarding the review authority for conditional use permits. And Section 17.48.045, Minor Conditional Use Permits, clarifies the review authority for minor conditional use permits. With that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2025 PC Next in Order, recommending that the city council take the following actions: One, find that the adoption of the ordinance has been reviewed in compliance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and SEQA Guidelines, and that the adoption of the ordinance is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Sections 15378, because this is not a project, and 15061b3, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, because the amendments involve general policy and procedure making. And two, introduce and adopt ordinance number Next in Order, amending Section 17.20.040, Development slash Design Considerations of Chapter 17.20, General Property and Use Standards, repealing and replacing Chapter 17.32 Wireless Communication Facilities, amending Section 17.34.010, introduction of Chapter 17.34, introduction of Division 4, Permits and Review, and amending Section 17.48.045, Minor Conditional Use Permits of Chapter 17.48, Conditional Use Permits of Title 17 of the Ranch Mirage Municipal Code, subject to the addition of additional amendments to the municipal code as may be recommended by staff, which are outside of the purview of the Planning Commission and therefore go directly to the city council. That concludes staff's presentation. And staff would like to note that a written public comment was received on this item, which was distributed to the Planning Commission prior to this meeting. Thank you. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. So I'll turn it over to staff to open to public comment.
Thank you. I received one speaker card from Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon again, Brad Anderson, City of Ranch Mirage. I did submit some written comments stated before. I'm in opposition to this. And there's a lot of factors. Hopefully people can look through my written comments and, and figure it out. There was a lot to this. A lot of, a lot of housekeeping, I guess, went along with this, this proposed agenda item. I have issues with, like the continuous use permits, having the director or the city manager probably most likely be the deciding factor in those. I think a lot of that, especially near or close to residents or zones. I know we have a couple of mobile cell phone type, antenna type in, in, in residents' neighborhoods already. But they went through the proper channels, meaning city council, public review, meaning that people like me can come up and go, wow, I don't let that, my neighborhood at least know about it. And, and other factors. I know this is a streamlining aspect to, to promote this area and have, have different companies come in and improve or, or build here for cell phone coverage. It's not that I'm against that. And I know the public, the narrative around city council members, right, to, for public safety, and it could be and is in an aspect, but not everybody needs to have or should have the capability. That sounds bad, but have the capability of being in contact with anybody at any time. And that's, I, I, I'm not saying that's not a bad thing, but I don't think we shouldn't have everybody pay for that luxury to have everybody have that. And, and that's what the city is doing right now. And that's it. I will go ahead and review the minutes of this meeting. I don't normally watch the meetings, watch the videos. So I have to go. But thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on this item? And that was the only speaker.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and close public comments and open it up to commissioner comments. I'll, I'll start. Take David off the hot seat. I do have one question regarding, regarding if these changes make any amendment to the application process and approval process to any applicants, when coming through for like a wireless facility or, what, what changes are, are being implemented?
So the changes to the wireless code section are pretty comprehensive. You know, new definitions, new provisions in here. But in terms of just a broad overview of the entitlement process, it does change certain things. So for instance, on page 242 of your agenda packet, you know, kind of details three different approval processes here. So one, for a director level review for a new wireless communication facility established on an existing building or structure. So for instance, you know, in the past, I think year or two, the Planning Commission reviewed Cupola on top of a building for a dish wireless facility. In that case, this would be something that staff would review because it would be on top of an existing building. Number two would be Planning Commission review authority for new wireless communication facilities located within a project site that already has an existing or entitled tower. So if there's already a site, for instance, like Palm Valley School that has its towers there, or the Children's Discovery Museum, if they wanted to add an additional tower, this would trigger Planning Commission review only instead of city council. And then it would be city council review for new wireless communication facilities if they're on a site that's never had them before. I would like to note that there is a caveat here that if determined otherwise by the director, the process could change based on that determination by the director to streamline this. And again, staff is doing this based on city council direction to streamline the code section here for wireless communication facilities. And like I did mention in my presentation, the city did conduct a wireless master plan where the city's consultants mapped out radio frequencies driving on every single city street to get real world data on the three cell carriers, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon. And as part of that plan, they identified, you know, recommendations on how to improve cell coverage and identified also preferred locations where these cell towers should go as well to, to fill in the coverage gaps, to provide better coverage for the city and its residents.
So in regards to timing for the approval process, does this make the process shorter in most cases?
Yes, it would allow more flexibility. So for instance, like I mentioned that first example, instead of, you know, that dish wireless facility that's on top of an existing building, going to Planning Commission and city council for a review, which, you know, adds months to the entitlement process, it would be a staff level review.
Okay. Yep, thank you. So yeah, I mean, certainly as we move, as technology advances and the, Murray had mentioned, Commissioner Bryant mentioned the, the map, the virtual map, putting in your address and determining cell phone coverage is, is pretty, pretty handy tool. But certainly, I, I'm, it looks to be a, a step we need to move forward with as far as encouraging development and streamlining and making communication and, and technology and kind of moving along. So I'll turn my comment, or move to Commissioner Gray and...
Thank you, Chair Agostini. Anyway, one of my favorite subjects, the really dreadful cell service we have throughout one of the finest cities in California. I'm glad that we're taking significant steps. The city council has listened to its constituents, probably their own experience getting cut off during an important call, and taken significant action already to do what they can to improve the service and to encourage the people that actually have to take action that would result in the approval of service to do so. As you noted, Commissioner, Chairman, rather, there's been significant technological change. Fewer people have landlines. The importance of mobile communication has become even greater. And anything we can do to facilitate that, I believe, is good. I carefully read the, the comments that were submitted. I don't think these are particularly well taken. I think that the, bringing the current code into conformance with modern technology and streamlining the procedures is the least we could do to encourage the development of better cell service. So I'm very much in favor of what has been proposed.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chinter?
Yes. Cell service is critical. It's very important. And earlier, we were talking about national disasters. We were talking about hazard mitigation. And it ties in because I can tell you during 2017, the Tubbs Fire, the county's cell phone warning system did not work. And as a result, there were, of course, close to 6,000 homes burned, but there are also a number of lives lost. And the county was sued because of that, although of course, the major liability was PG and E because the winds blew the lines down and started the fire. But nonetheless, without the proper cell service, if we had a situation like that or some other national, or other, excuse me, disaster, it would be critical to have good cell service so that we could warn everyone that something was coming, such as a flood or a fire. And, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kirin?
Well, I'm just going to agree with all the comments that have been made so far. And yes, you know, I, people who work remotely, like my household, it can get very frustrating at times, taking a conference call out in the front yard. So I am certainly in all for it, not just for the emergency issues, but business that people are trying to conduct.
Commissioner Bryant?
You know, I, I have two questions. The first, Colin, is for you. While I spent a lot of time with Ben and Joy, and I read through this over and over, I got lost with all the different codes and the linking transition from one code to another code. So my first question is, has legal gone through this and all of the linking of old codes, new codes, changes, do they all tie together?
Our office did work hand in hand with staff on this to do our best to vet out and hopefully make sure it's internally consistent as well as consistent with the rest of the municipal code.
Okay, all right. Thank you. My, again, again, I kind of got lost in all the things. The bottom, here's my bottom line question, Ben. A few years ago, we had a, well, since the seven years, six years I've been here, we've recommended approval for a fair number of cell phone towers to the city council. And some number of them have not been built. I don't, I forget the number, but they have not all been built. So, and, and again, we're all in favor of better cell service, you know, you know, tech, a lot of people, you say, don't have land phones. And it's critical that we have, we sell cell service, people that work from home, so on. So I'm all for that. So my bottom line question is, do all these changes mean that cell, new cell phone towers or major changes, like if somebody wants to lower the height, raise the height, go into a new location, do these bypass the Planning Commission and the city council? And are they able to, these decisions made at the staff level? That, that's my bottom line question.
So like I mentioned earlier on page 242 of the agenda packet, it kind of lays out the procedures there. So again, there's a caveat here that allows the director to determine otherwise. But, you know, it's director level review authority for a new facility that's established within an existing building, whether it can be like on the rooftop or on the sides of the building, like we see kind of at Eisenhower, where they have antennas on, on the buildings there. But for Planning Commission level review, that would typically be triggered if it's a new wireless communication facility tower located on a site that already has an existing one. So like I mentioned, you know, the Children's Discovery Museum has multiple. If somebody were to install a new tower there after this code has been adopted, if that's the direction that this moves forward with, that would be Planning Commission level review.
Right. A, a few years ago, there was a cell tower proposed by, at the Western, the Western Mission Hills, the resort over there. And it was right on, it was on the western border next to- the resort over there, and it was right on, it was on the western border next to the Mission Hills and homes and so on. Now, I, I think we either notified a 500 feet or 1,000 feet of all the residences, all the property owners around there, and we got great pushback because we had, because it went to a public hearing, people were notified, and we got great pushback. And after listening through, you know, all the issues, I agreed 100% it should not go there. And it turned out that, I can forget the company that was looking for it, they did not really evaluate all the potential sites. They did it, and it was moved, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was moved down to the golf course somewhere. Is that, is that accurate? Ryan, do you remember that? Okay. But it was moved, I, I think maybe down towards the middle of the, where it doesn't affect anybody. And so that's the benefit of having these things come through the planning commission and then to the city council. So while I'm 100% in favor of better and more cell service, I'm not in favor of having these things bypass the planning commission and the city council and made at the staff level. If somebody wants, there's an existing tower and they want to put one more aerial on it, that, that's fine. But if it's a new tower or a change to an existing tower, or if it's a facility near a residential area, as opposed to not long ago, there was a restaurant near the Holiday Inn right over here, one of those things, wasn't there something stuck up there on the cupola or copula? Didn't we?
There, there's cell, cell towers there as well.
Yeah, okay. So something like that, that's pretty straightforward, and that's okay. But again, this, this is a complex, so if any way it bypasses the planning commission or the council for any major facility, and I'm not sure what major is, certainly any new tower, changes to an existing tower, or facilities near a residential area, I would not be in favor of that. I would want it to still come through the planning commission and ultimately have the city council approve it or not approve it, and be sure there's, there's, the public, notice is made to the public, so the public has an opportunity to come in and voice their, you know, their concerns about it.
And then if I just may reiterate here, you know, the code section updates do kind of detail what's director level, what's planning commission level, and what's city council level. And like I mentioned, there is a caveat there that the director can make a determination otherwise. But, you know, if we feel that it's something that's controversial, that it's not in the right place, we also at the, per the municipal code, the director has the option to elevate things as well too. So if it's something that's planning commission level, the director can elevate it to city council level as well too. So there's those caveats of the municipal code already existing for our permits, that things can be further elevated to an additional body if needed. But again, with the wireless master plan that the city filed recently, we're just trying to streamline the process and have provisions in here to allow us to streamline. It doesn't mean that we're always going to use this here, but it gives us the opportunity to be able to streamline.
So again, I hate to beat a dead horse, but if it, if it allows discretionary approval of major facilities, whether they would or the, you know, the, the staff would or would not do it, if it allows discretionary approval of a major facility, I'm not in favor of that. If it's very clear that, like the cupola thing, or they want to add another aerial to an existing tower, and sometimes you have a tower in place and it could be shared by, say, three different carriers, there's two there now, and we know that maybe in the future a third carrier wants to come along, that's okay. It's not a substantial substantive change. And then especially if anything is going in a residential area, I don't think that should be discretionary. I think the public should be notified and have an opportunity to come in, like the one at the Westin, the hotel, it was literally right next to the, a line of homes at Mission Hills, and we got massive blowback on that. And if I'd lived over there, I would, I would have been one of the people complaining against it, and they moved to another site, which worked out just fine. And that's the benefit of having a public hearing and a public notice. So I guess I'm still, I'm not totally satisfied because I don't understand all the linkings and everything else, what actually is discretionary? And is it crystal clear that any major facility must go to the planning commission and ultimately, of course, the city council? That, that's what I'm, I'm looking for, that assurance. If it's not there, then I'm not in favor of this.
And then I would just like to add one more point on page 248 of your agenda packets too, as a part of some of the changes here that staff made. Staff created a section here for additional findings to be made for any type of entitlement application that deals with wireless communication facilities. And I'll just read some of these findings out loud here. One of them is that the proposed facility is visually compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So that's something that, whether it goes to a direct level review, planning commission level review, or city council level review, it's a finding that has to be made, that the facility complies with the height, location, and design standards as provided in this chapter, and that alternative sites located further from a residential district or public park or any sites, as may be identified by the city as a preferred site, cannot be feasibly fulfill the coverage needs fulfilled by the installation at the proposed site, or the applicant cannot acquire the necessary approval. So they have to determine that, you know, they've looked at other sites as well too. And these findings have to be made if these amendments are moved forward with and adopted.
Right. So I saw in the, the, the plan that was done, they had a map of the city and all the dots all over the place where you had good service and bad service and so on.
And we can pull that up, I have that on my...
Let me finish my thing. So that's all well and good, that's the master plan. So if the master plan said, this area, the cellphone service is terrible, does that allow discretionary approval? Okay, we can, because the master plan said the service is terrible, and it happens to be near a residential area, that the, that staff level can approve a new facility there? That's the thing that I'm looking for, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but I'm uncomfortable, especially if it's near a residential area and the residents don't have the opportunity to voice their opinions. And again, it has nothing to do with, we all want better cellphone coverage, or most places, because a lot of places it is bad, and, and we do need that. That's not the issue. The issue is, and if it came to the council, like the one at the Weston Mission Hills, we ended up getting coverage to cover the area, but it wasn't next to the homes at, at Mission Hills. That's my point. And so I still don't understand, if you can assure me that any major facility that's going in, especially in a residential area, even if the master plan says service is terrible, that shouldn't give us the impetus to say, okay, we're going to approve it. Ryan, do you want to?
Let me see if I can help, Ben. Commissioner Bryant, I, I think I hear you loud and clear, and I think every one of us staff members hold that level of public input at the highest regard. I mean, we're here to be stewards of your community. I think what we learned as directed by the city council through the wireless master plan is if you have any expectation of improving your service, you have to get out of the way. And what I mean by that is, if we continue to put wireless carriers through the very rigorous process that you're describing, they won't come. And they won't come, and they haven't been coming, and they haven't been coming before that. The one with Weston Mission Hills, if I understand correctly, is, I think, almost a decade old at this time. We haven't had an application for a new cell tower, not on a city property. They see city properties as kind of low hanging fruit because we can work a deal out without a whole lot of issues fairly rapidly. But to answer your question directly, if there's an area in that master plan that has terrible service and it's, it's telling us to put a tower there, yes, we want to approve that, and we want to approve it as expeditiously as possible. Do I want to stick a tower right in your backyard? No. But I think what Ben is trying to assure you, you will not get that assurance you're looking for, and if that means that you're opposed to the changes, that's totally fine. As a commissioner, that's, you know, sometimes we disagree. But we are trying to follow what the master plan says, which is basically, essentially, if you have any expectation of changing the level of service you have right now, you have to change your regulatory scheme and stop putting these wireless carriers through that exact process. Do they pick the right locations? No. Do they, but that's what staff's role in that would be. I know Ms. Dukic well enough to know, she is not going to allow that carrier to come in and stick it right in that backyard, and would have negotiated it to the right location. So, long story short, is you won't find the assurance, I believe, you're looking for, that every single one of those towers is going to come through this hearing as it is today. It's intended to do the exact opposite, which is provide the director the ability to approve these towers when it makes sense, when it meets the findings, and when it doesn't, she has the ability to elevate it to the planning commission and/or the city council. And I see Ben and Colin might want to jump in on this too.
Let me follow up to, so are you, is the reason that we're not getting applications because of the timing it takes to get one?
Yes.
Or is it because they may want one somewhere that we may not approve?
As I understood it, it's the ti, so we were described by a lot of industry experts who used to work in the industry, how they kind of think, right? They've got Carrier V is looking to improve service throughout the Southern California region, and they start looking around, they have a dozen sites. The person managing the entire region is looking at which ones have the, the highest likelihood of success. Jurisdictions like ours with regulatory schemes that have existed like this for a very long time go to the back of the bus almost immediately. So they start working with cities who already have the get out of the way approach because they want to get a tower in and they want to get it active. And they know, you know, they, if they apply for a public hearing in a, in a city like this, that they're going to be, you know, six, eight, nine, 10, 12 months later, and they might be in a very litigious battle with some neighbors too. So they, that's what we have heard, which is these old public hearing style processes are leading to what we have today, which is poor coverage.
All right. So I think, I hear what you're saying is that it's the timing, these regulations will reduce the timing.
Yes.
So if we go from one year to 90 days or something, but along with that, we have to have faith in our staff that if they think it's going to, if we did go to a public hearing, then there would be a lot of blowback, that they would, they would be very cautionary, and maybe they might bring it to a public hearing, or they would take that into consideration.
Yes.
Yeah, like Ryan mentioned, you know, we're, we're very careful and, you know, cautious when we do things as well too. Just a quick story, when we were working initially with AT&amp;T for the cell tower next to Fire Station 50 on that vacant lot, even before we started seriously considering it, we coordinated with the Thunderbird HOA internally as staff, met with them on the site, showed them preliminary plans with AT&amp;T, got letter of support from their HOA, and the HOA, you know, discussed it with their homeowners as well too, just to ensure that we had that HOA support before we started formally moving forward with that proposed project on city-owned property. And we did that just at the staff level. That's the level of review that staff kind of takes, and, you know, we look at things very closely.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you. And Ryan, thanks a lot. It's good to have, you know, from the trenches, feedback on these type of things too, so appreciate it.
And just to add to that, and Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, but under this ordinance and the hypothetical you had given about the Mission Hills cell tower, that is still something that would have gone to council under this ordinance as a new, as the review authority for a new wireless communication facility tower. So that, that would have still processed through council, through hearings. Also, we did sort of delineate, as Ben said, the review authority for certain kinds of facilities. I note, there is some discretion built in there, sometimes to give staff the ability to implement city council's wireless master plan, but also because the law is sort of ever-changing, and there are sort of nuances in the law as the federal government FCC issues regulations on these things too. So some of the intent there is to also help give some flexibility when either the law changes or there's underlying law that might require sort of different things. So as a hypothetical, there are certain actions under the, under law which might require a public hearing, and so we tried to build in flexibility to have it delineated what the review authority is, but then, as we stated, give the director the authority to bump it up to a higher authority if we need public input, as well as there's always the rights for people to appeal decisions by the city made to the next level of review authority. So just for context.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, those are my questions.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments?
The thing I want to do, point out is I know that, and you said something about not letting the public, and I just want to tell you that I live where he's talking about, and this is where I get the one bar, now that we don't have that tire. So while I think we need to be sensitive about what public and being, you know, people's residents and stuff, and, and I hear about that, the story about that being moved, but yet, I have one bar on a good day, and so, and I know it's very hard to balance the deal, but I think you'll do a great job on it, so.
You might need to switch carriers. Okay, so concluding Commissioner comments, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion in a second.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that the planning commission adopt resolution number 2025 PC, next in order, recommending that the city council take the following actions. One, find that the adoption of the ordinance has been reviewed in, in compliance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and SEQA guidelines, and that adoption of the ordinance is categorically exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, sections 15378, because it is not a project, and 15061B3, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, because the amendments involve general policy and procedure making, and, two, introduce and adopt ordinance number next in order, amending section 17.20.040, Development Design Considerations of Chapter 17.20, General Property and Use Standards, repealing and replacing Chapter 17.32, Wireless Communication Facilities, amending section 17.34.010, introduction of Chapter 17.34, introduction of Division 4, Permits and Review, and amending section 17.48.045, Minor Conditional Use Permits of Chapter 17.48, Conditional Use Permits of Title 17, zoning of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, subject to addition of further amendments to the municipal, municipal code, as may be recommended by staff, which are outside the purview of the planning commission and therefore go directly to city council.
Second.
Thank you.
Jason, before you, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We'll vote, I'm sorry. Before you close it off, I'd like to make a backwards Commissioner comment before you close the hearing, and that is, for the last few hearings, they're being recorded, and hopefully it gets out to the public. They're not doing the exhaustive minutes anymore, which I thought that was a good decision. But like, I don't come to all the city council meetings, but I can go watch them in the middle of the night if I want to, and you can go backwards, forwards. If you don't get something clearly, you can go back and listen very carefully to what everybody's saying. So that's a great benefit, and I don't see it as a, a less, a lessening the public's ability to understand what's going on. I see it as a great improvement in the public's ability to see what's going on, the planning commission, and the city council. And I know there's been, you know, people that feel the other way, but obviously it saves a lot of time and so on from the staff writing those exhaustive minutes, but it actually improves public access to what's going on. So I just wanted that in the, in, in the, kind of the public record.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Kristi for official vote.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Fantastic. So, looks like we outlasted everybody in the audience here today. It's 3:29, and I'll go ahead and conclude today's commission meeting.